Oh, I go ahead and start?
Yep.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the April the 8th School Board Meeting. Could I have someone do approval of the revised agenda, please?
You want to go?
I move that we approve the revised agenda as set forth.
Second. This requires a roll call.
Director Ann Halt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Janson.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Tonight, we have two public hearings that I will be bringing forward. The first public hearing is regarding the fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Board Secretary, have we received any correspondence?
I've not received any correspondence regarding the budget.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the audience or from the audience that would like to step forward and make comments at all? Okay. I'd like to move to the second public hearings regarding the secure entrance of the office remodel project proposed at Washington High School. Board Secretary, have you received any correspondence related to this item?
No, I've not received any correspondence related to the Washington High School project.
At this time, we open the floor for those who would like to address the board. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next, we have our superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, President Humbles. So, last Friday, our elementary students were introduced to a new lunch menu item, a black bean and rice dish made with locally grown black beans. Friday, which was celebrated as Black Bean Day in our elementary schools, marked the culmination of more than three years of planning, education, and coordination with community partners, including ISU Extension and Outreach and Food Corps, for CRCSD to become a farm-to-school chapter role model in the state. The processes included collaboration with local bean farmer Jason Grimm, who has been on-site every step of the way to support students and staff through the journey. Leading up to the big day, our food nutrition team learned how to cook the dish, which involves a two-day process of preparing the dried beans. This collaboration across sectors benefits our community, our economy, and our students by engaging them in a learning process that promotes lifelong well-being and opportunities to develop a career path. And as someone that had a chance to enjoy it, it just tasted really great. So, we have some exciting news regarding our school nurses. Sarah Hamilton, our school nurse at Johnson and Garfield, has been selected as the Iowa School Nurse of the Year. Sarah will be presented an award at the Spring Nurses Conference at the end of this week and will also be presented with an Excellence in School Nursing Award at the 2019 National Association of School Nurses Annual Conference in Denver to be held at the end of June 2019. Additionally, Terri Schloss, our school nurse at Taylor and Madison, has been awarded the 2019 Lillian Wald Award from the Iowa Public Health Association. The Lillian Wald Award recognizes a public health nurse who's provided exemplary public health nursing practice on behalf of public health in Iowa. So, congratulations to Terri and Sarah. The second annual Run Crandic Marathon is coming up on April 28th, and volunteers are still needed. You'll recall that all proceeds from Run Crandic benefit the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Iowa City Community School District. The $26,000 in proceeds to Cedar Rapids Schools from the 2018 marathon were used towards PE supplies to promote health and wellness. Volunteering is a great way to support our schools, and those who'd like to volunteer as an individual or group can do so at runcrandic.com. Metro High School Steam Academy, who we're going to hear from later this evening, is collaborating with the National Czech and Slovak Museum and Library on an extension project to build an 80-foot replica of the Berlin Wall, which will be used on the museum's property as a revolution in art exhibit through next November. Metro Steam Academy's been working with structural engineers, architects, and artists and building and trades to prepare for this project. Tomorrow and Wednesday, they'll be working with Schmidt Construction to install the wall on the property. Then, on April 15th through the 19th, they'll be surfacing the wall with the support of the Building Trades Team and numerous volunteers. That leads into an April 27th private reception with Ivan Cork, Ambassador of the Slovak Republic to the United States. The museum has invited a number of international artists to work with the students through next fall on mural installations on the wall that speak to the idea of revolution. It'll be exciting to see the finished product in November. And she happens to be here with us this evening. Candace Lynch, Principal of Johnson Steam Academy in Cedar Rapids, has been named the 2019 Iowa Elementary Principal of the Year by school administrators of Iowa. Yeah. Very good. And right now, she's just wanting to do anything but be here in this room. Yeah, exactly. We're all looking at you. This quote from SAI Executive Director Roh Korn is pretty cool. "So, Mrs. Lynch is a phenomenal choice to represent Iowa as the Elementary Principal of the Year. Her accomplishments and those of the academy's entire learning community are a model of embracing the opportunities they can provide. She inspires people to see and bring out the potential in each and every child." That's from Roh Korn. And if you know anything about Candy, she's very much a team-focused person, so very deserving. So, thanks, Candy.
Thank you. Any board reports?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I was able to attend our technology meeting that was led by Craig Barnum and Ryan Rendstrom at Kennedy High School, talking about our five-year graduated plan for our one-to-one student-to-device ratio. And there were parents there and teachers there, and they had some awesome questions. I think that Craig and Ryan did a fantastic job of answering those questions, taking some feedback, kind of refining the message so that we can answer all those questions really thoroughly. It was a great event, well-attended.
So, the board report that I had, just as an update with the SAFE, Equitable, and Thriving Task Force that we participated in in conjunction and as part of an initiative with the city of Cedar Rapids, Lynn County, and in partnership with the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation, we're actually now in the process of meeting to take the funds that were contributed by all the entities to support programming for at-risk students. The purpose of the fund, so I'll read directly from the information that was provided. The Creating Safe, Equitable, and Thriving Communities Fund was established in 2018 through a partnership with the city of Cedar Rapids, Lynn County, and the Cedar Rapids Community School District to address interrelational factors that lead to youth violence in Cedar Rapids. Grants from this fund will work towards creating a safe, equitable, and thriving community. So, I'm part of that committee. And over the next few weeks, we'll actually be looking at grant proposals. And the plan is to award up to the $40,000 to support programming for the youth in our community for the summer. So, as we get closer to that, make the decision, and I'll share that with everyone.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, I sent you the board, the email about SAVE has finally passed out of the Senate in the language that the House passed, so it is eligible for Senate debate for the full Senate. As of this morning, I have not seen it on the debate calendar, but I hopefully it will be out there this week. We'll see.
Any other board reports? Thank you. Now, we'll move to communications delegations and petitions. I have one person that would like to speak before the board, and that's Scott Druminsky. And to remind you, please state your name and address for record, and you will have up to five minutes, Scott.
Good evening. Thank you, President Humbles, Board of Education, Dr. Buck. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Scott Druminsky, 6917 Tarazo Drive Northwest here in Cedar Rapids. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Cedar Rapids Community School Foundation. As I think most folks up at the front know, and maybe some in the room too, I'm the chair of that group, and it's a pleasure and privilege to be able to do that. Also, want to note that Karen Swanson, our wonderful executive director, is here with us to be part of this update. And I plan just to give you a quick update on the things that are happening with the foundation, as we like to do every few months here. It's been a busy start to our year. We've got several different grants that are being reviewed right now and information that's coming in, so I thought I'd share a little bit with you. First of all, a big thank you to those who were able to attend our million-dollar celebration. We were very excited to finally get that in and have the weather cooperate with us to allow that to happen. It was a great morning, and what we're celebrating here is that there's a million dollars in assets sitting in the foundation's accounts. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to spend the million dollars. It means that money can be used to collect the returns on our investments, and those returns are used then to support programs throughout the school district. So, excited to have that million dollars there, ready to work towards the next million dollars so we can have a greater impact on our schools and our kids that are in the district. We also, at that event, announced the formation of our Legacy Society. It's a new planned giving program to assure that funds will be available for our programs to run long-term into the future. Speaking of programs, a couple of our grant programs are currently open for applications. Our Professional Development Grant will provide six teachers or staff members with scholarship money that will allow them to continue their education. That's a total of $2,000 that'll be given this year to those six teachers. Additionally, our School Project Grant application is also open right now, and will fund more than $40,000 in capital needs for programs throughout the district in 2019 through those programs. As you know, we are getting close to that time where we're going to say goodbye to another crop of excellent seniors, and we love that time. It gets to be busy, but it's a great time of year for us, just as it is for everybody else, and particularly those seniors. So, we have a couple of events that'll be taking place. There's the Senior Walk. We've been doing this for a few years now, and it continues to grow. It's an opportunity for the seniors to go back in cap and gown to the elementary schools where they started their career in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. In a lot of the schools, they come out into the hallways, they give them high fives, and they cheer for them. It's just a cool opportunity to not only celebrate those seniors, but for those younger elementary school kids like the ones that are sitting here. It won't be that long, and you're going to be graduating from high school, and you'll have a chance to go back and do that, too, and be celebrated by those who will walk in your footsteps down the road. We also, this year, thanks to the generous support of donors and families and other supporters, will be able to hand out more than 40 senior scholarship awards on the high school senior nights. It's always quite an honor to meet the students who have earned these honors, as well as to recognize the many individuals, families, and friends who have created a legacy through the foundation by having one of these named scholarships. The number of scholarships continues to grow each and every year, which is also very cool. Finally, I do want to note, if we have any University of Iowa Community Credit Union members, the credit union is matching all donations to the foundation during the month of April during their Give and Grow Program on a one-for-one match. So, it's an excellent program. I did want to make sure that you knew that, in case you are there, or would you like to open a count there? I'm sure they'd accept that as well. So, it's an amazing opportunity, and we appreciate their support as well. They are a supporter, by the way, all year round of the schools and the foundation as well, and we appreciate what they do. I always like to wrap with a thank-you letter. This one comes from Taft Middle School, and it is from the band program. The kids in the community program help fund a trip for the band members to go to see the Hawkeye Band Extravaganza at Carver Hawkeye Arena. I don't know if you've ever experienced one of these, but it's pretty cool. They bring the bands in, it gets very loud, very cool, but it also gives the students a chance, particularly these middle school students that are going to make some choices as to whether they want to continue their band career in high school, a chance to see what that looks like and what they can do if they further their education in the musical arts-like band. So, just a kind of a fun thing, and a letter with some pictures and a lot of signatures from the kids in the Taft band. Thank you for your time, and thank you, as always, for your support of the foundation. We look forward to sharing more with you again here in a few months.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there any items the board would like pulled or up for discussion? If not, can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And due to the, we'll have a roll call due to the personnel report and base wage increase of employment.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Janson.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Ann Halt.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. And next, we'll move to administration, the approval of the 2019-20 certified budget. This will be a voice vote. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Dave, I'm sorry. Oh, we were just going to go and do that for you.
All right. I can make it really brief, but I didn't expect it to be that brief.
Okay. I'm sorry. My apologies, Dave.
That's all right.
Sorry.
Thank you, President Humbles and the board and Dr. Buck. I'm pleased to have here the fiscal year 20 budget update here. This is going to be very short and sweet. You've seen a lot of this information at the previous board meeting, but this is the actual public hearing night and adoption night. So, we can see we've had a public, the board took action on March 6th to actually publish, have a public hearing, and tonight is the actual budget and public hearing. Our, all funds are, we have preliminary revenues of $289,647,474 and preliminary expenses for all funds of $285,035,313. And so, that published rate is pretty much the same as last year. It's at $15,07011. And it's based on the 2.06 supplemental state aid given by the state, and it includes the $5 equity per pupil amount. And when you run the numbers for us, our new money really is not 2.06, it's roughly 0.8% because of declining enrollment and open enrollment. So, here's a trend of our tax levy. You can see that we tried to keep things steady at different times throughout, and we're looking at, we were at 1517 to 1516. We were even at 1548, then dropped down to 1538, and now we're at 1507. So, that's a good trend that we're down. Cash reserves. Cash reserve levy kind of is all over the place, but this year for FY '20, it's up a little bit, and that's due to our ELL and special ed deficit is what's driving those Good news is, in Lynn County, we have been in third place, I guess, so third lowest. When I say, you know, lower the better for our tax levy rate when we compare adjusted for income cert tax. Why we do that is not all schools have an income cert tax, so if we want to do apples-to-apples comparison, we need to take that out and try to figure out what it would be if we actually had a property tax. So, for Cedar Rapids, we've been at 1631 for FY '19, and that is the third lowest. The lowest was Albernett at $1399, followed by Northland, then Cedar Rapids at 1631. Evaluations have been going up, but this year was a smaller increase than last year. We're only up at 2.16%, I believe is that number? No, 2.21%, not 1.6, 2.21%. So, what are our next steps? Well, we're still monitoring SAVE, as Director Ann Halt has mentioned, that that's hopefully will be voted on this week, maybe? Cross our fingers. And then, we're going to continue to make modifications to our budget for different considerations that we have throughout the rest of the year. And tonight, we're actually, hopefully, the board will take action on the proposed budget. Any questions?
That was quick. Any questions from the board? No questions, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, now, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
So moved. Thank you. Next, we're moving to learning and leadership, and we have a room full of people today. That's good to see. And Val Dolazal, you will present for us today.
Thank you. Yes, we have lots of visitors with us today, which is really exciting. So, thank you, President Humbles, and also board members. I'm pretty excited tonight to bring forward six buildings that are doing some innovative work, and I thought I'd start with just even talking a little bit about what is innovation. So, by definition, innovation is when you refer to something new or a change to an existing product, idea, or field. That's the definition. So, what's it mean in Cedar Rapids? What's it mean in the Cedar Rapids Community School District? It is when building leadership and staff rally around something new or a change to an existing way of doing things that's going to result in a better outcome for students. Two years ago, you as a school board challenged us as district leaderships on ways to increase and support innovative programming. At that time, we had three magnet schools, had talked about an additional two, which we're moving forward with in the fall. We also had a few buildings that we're going to even see and hear from tonight that were doing some things that maybe weren't as organized with support from the central office or other funding if that was needed. So, we created a process. We discussed how could we provide more support, possibly more funding if needed, for buildings if they need that as they're looking at innovative programming? Created an application, of course we did, right? That's what we do, create more processes. But what that application involves is the building principal and staff really talking about what is the problem that they're trying to address? Also, what is new and different about this innovation that's maybe is not already happening in the school? What research or data are they using? How does it align with their school improvement plan? And how does it align with our district goals? And then, how will it positively impact students? So, those are the things that are looked at, and then from there, then we determine what additional funding might be needed, what additional support from district staff could be needed, are there materials that we want to investigate, as well as how are we using that space within that building? So, tonight, we're going to hear from Johnson Steam Academy, as well as Harrison, around Leader and Me. We're going to hear from Nixon around personalized learning, Franklin about the Wright program, Jefferson about their blend ed, and then finally from Metro Steam Academy. Each building is going to talk with you. They've all brought staff and students with them, so you're going to be able to hear from students as well. And at the end, we'll allow you to ask questions specifically to that building, since we've got six buildings here. So, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions before the next building moves on. We hope this provides you kind of a summary of just some of the innovative work that's happening in Cedar Rapids. There's still other things that are happening in our district and in our community that should be highlighted as well, but enjoy the night. So, we're going to start with Johnson Steam Academy.
Good evening. We're absolutely delighted to be here to share with you our journey as we continue to learn and grow as we're just finishing up our fourth year as a magnet school. I often say it's been kind of a wild ride. We don't always know exactly what tomorrow is going to bring or where we're headed next. We do tons of planning, and as Val said, looking at research, what's best for our kids, and looking at our data is the thing that drives us the most. I'm going to talk very little tonight and turn it over to some of our brilliant fifth graders who have a story to tell, and I think they'll do an amazing job, and our magnet coordinator, Cassidy Rankin. So, thank you for having us this evening.
As Candace Lynch said, our amazing principal, we are so happy to be here. It has been an amazing four years, so we just really thank you for investing in the staff and student learning at Johnson. So, as she said, you really want to hear from them and their stories, so we will have them tell some of the exciting things that happen at Johnson on a daily basis, and some of the things that happen periodically throughout the year. This is Jason.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, I am honored to be here tonight as one of the three representatives and a student of four years at Johnson Steam Academy. First, a round of applause for all our teachers and the great work they do. Now, what is a habitat? A habitat is the natural home or environment of an animal, plant, or other organism. When I was in third grade, our class created a replica of the rainforest in our own classroom. Before we started, we did lots of research on the rainforest. Speakers who shared their experiences of the rainforest came to our school, and our teacher guiding us and providing us with the sounds of the rainforest. Doing the habitat taught us about team-building skills, being creative, being investigators, using our imagination, and being proud of our achievements as a class. The sad part is tearing it down after working so long and hard building. There are bad and good benefits of having a teacher for two years. A, the bad benefit is you can't get away with a lot of things, as you can't get away with a teacher you have for only one year. B, now, the good benefit of having a teacher for two years, one, no introductions, getting to know you. You already know each other, so it makes it easier just to get right to business and get learning, because you know your teacher and your teacher knows you. Two, the advantage, when you are with a teacher for two years, the teacher knows your strengths, your weaknesses, your capabilities, and knows where improvements can be made, giving you a chance to grow your potential to become a greater student. You can't get this type of advantage with a teacher who's only been with you for one year. Thank you, Ms. Ernst, for being my teacher for two years. Thank you, and good night.
Next, we have Miletha.
Today, I'm going to be talking to you guys about ST Math and Fifth Grade Colonist Simulations. First, I'll tell you, ST Math is a lot of math. ST Math can be hard, but we work at different levels based on our pre-test and where we are grade-wise. Johnson has surface posts that let us do that. We work to go up 3% weekly. Our class goal is to gain 1% each day. I picked to talk about ST Math because I am almost to 100% of fifth grade completion. I am at 96%. And in colonists simulations, our class is learning about the colonists by getting to do different types of things. We learn there are loyalists and patriots. Loyalists fight on the side of King George III and for taxes. Benjamin Franklin is a patriot, and he is for less taxes. Our class is divided between loyalists and patriots. I am excited. I am a patriot. We are also learning about ceilings as money, tea and pantalons, all caused ceilings. Our teacher, Ms. Ernst, gave us actual coins to do math to buy things with them. And we got taxed on milk at lunch, even if we didn't have it on our tray. We also had cones as mountains to separate our playground. The king gave us the small side. We weren't happy about that. Mr. Freddie is our town choir and does announcements of hary hary, all royal subjects of the crown. I liked it. At the end of all of that, we got to do posters and, oh, I can't say it right, we got to do posters for our simulations.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have Gwen.
Ash Ted, my name is Gwen, and I'm going to be talking to you about the Garment Design Challenge, which is basically your teacher gives you a national park, and you have to imagine that you're stuck on that national park with nothing but a blanket, and you have to make items out of the blanket to survive. And this is one of the items from my class. They were in a cold climate, so they made this. And then, this is another item from my class, students in my class, and they were in a hot climate, and they made this to protect their arms from sunburns. My group's shirt did not work well. It fell apart when we put it on. And also, I want to talk about, we have free choice centers in art, which is basically when we go to art class, we get our folders, and then we write down what center we're going to be participating in, then we go and participate in that center. And we have the collage center, the 3D sculpture center, the drawing center, and the sewing center, which isn't all sewing. You can make pom-poms there, anything with string. And then, the 3D sculpture, we have like wires and toothpicks and stuff like that so you can make sculptures. I made a wire sculpture, but then my dog ate it, so. And then, there's the collage center, where there is different pieces of paper, and you can bend them and make collages and stuff like that. And then, the last one I said was the drawing center, which is where you just color.
These are just a few of the examples of the learning experiences that happened at Johnson, and so we would love to answer any questions that you have for Candace, myself, or the students.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank the students for getting up in front of a bunch of people and explaining what you're doing. There's some exciting things going on, and I do like that garment. There's some exciting things going on, and I do like that garment. That was pretty nice. But thank you all. You guys did a great job. And at your school, you guys are truly making a difference in students' lives. So, thank you.
And I think we're turning it over to Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Trista Montanak. I'm the principal at Harrison, and I have with me kindergarten teacher extraordinaire, Tammy Rundle. You can see by our slide that we are very new into our innovative topic here of the leader in me, and we're very, very thankful that we're bringing this to our staff. This year, we started training our staff in the fall to really focus on the adults in the building before we rolled it out to our students. So, I wanted Tammy to talk tonight. She volunteered to talk about how the leader in me has kind of changed her life and how it's made a difference already for her students.
Hi, I'm Tammy Rundle. But, let's see, we started our journey last spring, and it was all new at first, and I wasn't sure about it. But then, we had some intensive training at the beginning of the year. It required us to have an extra day of in-service, but it was well worth it. It's based on the seven pillars for successful people, and we're going to implement that with children. And that's the most exciting thing, because like, I find it's easier for me to adapt something new if I can teach it. So, it's kind of a win-win situation, because the kids are learning from me, and I'm learning from them as well, and it makes me live it. So, the biggest two takeaways that I got from this is choose your weather. You know, everything, there's a lot of stuff happening in life, but how we look at it, how we choose to see it, that's what matters most. And it's funny, because even in kindergarten, we talk about choose your weather, and say someone doesn't get to do something, I'm like, there's always tomorrow. And now, they're just mimicking that. Every time someone's upset, they're like, oh, there's always tomorrow, don't worry, and they've had each other on the back. And then, the next takeaway, they talk about four quadrants, and everybody needs to be up in quadrants one and two. That's when you're doing what you should be doing. Quadrant four is my big one that I have committed to staying away from, and that includes technology, like on my phone. So, my 16-year-old daughter, I told her about this, and to kind of like get her off the phone, but now it comes back at me, because she's like, Mom, you're in quadrant four. Put your phone down and let's talk. So, yeah, those were the big two takeaways for me. And then, we've got awesome books that I've introduced. We didn't have to do that this year, but I wanted to start with kindergarten with Habits one, two, and three. And we go through these every day, every day. And habit one is be proactive, be in charge of you, be the leader of you, so that kind of curbs the tattling. And then, habit two, we have, so, begin with the end in mind. We talk about our learning targets, what kind of day we're going to have. And then, habit three, it's first things first. You work first, and then you play. And I hear that a lot. If someone's messing around, they'll tell each other, you know, first things first. So, it's just been a really positive thing for our school and for myself personally. Do you have any questions about that?
So, which classrooms? Was it just, you know, one per grade? Was it just a couple of different grades, or how was it rolled out?
So, we're rolling it out in the fall to the whole school, but we offered, the teachers were very, very excited, so they wanted to start now, but we didn't require it, because we are really focusing on how we are living the seven habits before we're teaching others. So, really, it was just whoever wanted to start it out, just kind of took it and went with it. Both of our first-grade rooms, third grade, so not everybody, but eventually.
Okay. And then, if I'm not mistaken, maybe Dr. Buck, you can help me with it. Kenwood kind of implemented the same thing. So, were they helpful and kind of working together, collaborating?
Yes, that's the most awesome thing about being part of the leader in me. Coalition is not the right word, but it's blanking on me right now. We kind of, you know, steal ideas. Oh, synergize, there you go, see? She's totally living the seven habits, working together so that we're not recreating the wheel. Yeah, so it's been very good.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jenny Gable, and I'm the principal at Nixon Elementary School. I have the, first of all, thank you so much for allowing us to come and share our innovative projects. It's so great to be able to showcase the hard work that every school is doing, and I know, I think I speak for all the principals here, when I say it's such a privilege to be able to share out what we're doing every day. So, I've brought some learners with me today to talk a little bit about what we do at Nixon around personalized learning. About a year ago, I came and shared about our blended learning initiative that we used, blended learning as a tool to enhance the work that we're doing in the classrooms. And this year, we've moved just from using blended as a tool into more personalized learning experiences for our learners. So, I'll give you kind of a brief summary of that, and then I'll let our learners talk a little bit about what they love about personalized learning at Nixon. With personalized learning at Nixon, we've taken our traditional second, third, fourth, and fifth-grade learners, and we've kind of clumped them together. And we have two teams at Nixon. Now, we have a green team and a gold team, which are our school colors, and every learner is on one of those two teams. And they're multi-aged, so in the homerooms, when you walk in first thing in the morning, you might see second graders with fourth graders, or third graders with fifth graders, and they're kind of working together on some soft skill development in the morning. And then, from there, they break out into reading and math and pod time, which is sort of like our science and social studies time, and then they progress through their day in that way. The only times they're really together with their solid grade level is during like specials time, lunch and recess is multi-age, so they're getting to know each other across the different parts of the day. And what we really love about this is that we're able to take the stigma off of if I'm a little bit behind in something, I get exactly what I need without having the embarrassment of having to go like to a different classroom. Oh, I don't quite get third grade, so I'm going to have to go back to second grade, or the teacher has to really stretch it. Now, we just put all of our learners together, and we give a pre-assessment, and we figure out what gaps they have or where they excel, and we get them right what they need, and we let them progress through that. So, because we don't do traditional grade levels, we've kind of taken away second grade and third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade. So, we have new names for our learners. Our traditional second graders are now called rookies, third graders are called cadets, apprentices are our fourth graders, and our scholars are our fifth graders. And this way, we can talk about each other without the grade level obligations. We utilize blended as a tool still for the work that we do every day. In math, we use pre- and post-assessments to figure out what students need, the learners need for their standards. We put them into topics, for example, place value. We take a pre-test on place value, and then we figure out where they need to go, and we stick them there, and they start learning, learning, learning. They work to mastery, so if I maybe test a little bit below my grade level, I master that, and I move on to my grade-level content. On the converse, if I test a little bit high, I get to work at my level and progress myself in a year's worth of growth. So, it's great for everybody. And then, in math, we do a lot of self-pacing, so no two learners have exactly the same amount of time on a standard. So, if I need a little bit more time, I get the time I need, I get the coaching from the facilitators that I need, and I move at my own pace. In reading, we still do the pre- and post-assessments to determine skill need. They work to mastery in that as well. And we have kind of a modified pacing. We don't let students move exactly on their own every day, but once a week, they take a post-assessment if the facilitator feels like they're ready, and if they pass that post-assessment, they move to the next mastery task. So, it is a little bit different learning than we've done in the past. And then, looking ahead to next year, we'll continue this work, refine it, modify a little bit, take what we've learned this year, and keep growing it. I just wanted to kind of point out, this here is something I, I'm really actually glad the foundation presented today, because we actually were given a grant for additional white sports space, because we use what's called progression boards to track student learning. So, if I'm this purple paw here, I know I'm working on this. Once I've gone through the different sections, I move my paw over, and that's how I kind of keep track, and teachers are able to keep track as well. So, that's kind of a very short version of personalized learning, and I brought three learners with me to kind of talk about the things they love about personalized learning at Nixon.
Hello, my name is Braylon, and I am a fifth grader at Nixon. Something I like about personalized learning is it's easy to get on. So, like, a few years ago, you'd have to have all these homeworks, all these folders, but now, you can just go on home, access your thing, and you can just do it all, right And another thing I like is, so at the beginning of the year, I was kind of annoyed, because I couldn't see my friends on gold team, but now, what we do is if you get all your work done every day, you get to go outside and talk with your friends at gold team, which kind of works, because everybody used to, in the hallways, in the middle of class, they were like, blah, 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 hi, blah, 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 blah.
My name is Madeline, and what I like about personalized learning is that when I need help in math, all I have to do is go ask my math teacher and say, hey, I don't understand this, and they can give me what I need, when I need it, and if I still don't understand it, all I have to do is go back on the computer, go to the iLearn, and watch some videos, and then I can get it, and I can do a lot of things on the computer that help me understand more and with the teacher in our group. And that we can meet with the teacher in small groups at the same time, and then sometimes that teacher will pull you up separately, and they'll ask you things about the MT you're on, and you can answer them, and then when they think that you're ready, you can actually take the final test to move on to a higher MT.
Hi, my name is Jordan. I'm a cadet at Nixon, and what I like about personalized learning is that when, so we take a pre-test, and let's just say I was testing for place value. If I got MT one, two, and three, I passed those, but then I didn't understand MT four, I could skip over one, two, three, do four, and then skip over to the next thing that I need to do. And like, if we were, if my buddy over here is on the master test, and I'm still on my iLearn, and we're on the same MT, that's okay, we don't both have to move at the same time. I get to work at my, like, my pace, the one that I need to be on at that time. And lots of other schools don't do that, so I think that Nixon's really special, because we actually get to learn what we need to learn when we need to learn it.
So, that's all we have today. Does anybody have any questions while we're here?
Well, it's really nice to see how excited you guys are about this personalized learning, and thank you for sharing. It seems like you guys are having great fun at your school.
All right, I'm going to be very short. I just get the steam pleasure of introducing a couple of our staff members, Mr. John Hebrink and Mrs. Amanda Boyer, who are going to talk about Kite, and we have 11 very shy students that are going to present in front of you tonight as well. Thank you.
Good evening. The first thing you know about Kite is that we asked for two volunteers to come, and half the program decided they wanted to come and talk to you about that. So, that's kind of a hallmark of what we do at Kite. As part of the ownership, they thought that a good way to present Kite to you would be do a short skit. So, they're going to do a skit as if they're presenting to a fifth grader that was interested in coming to Franklin Kite. And we'll kind of present right in the front here, so that everyone can see, and I hope their volume level will be appropriate for that. So, without further ado, the skit.
Hi, I'm Owen Kilbuck. I'm a fifth grader, and I heard there's something called kite at Franklin Middle School. Anybody have any idea what that is?
Kite is a noun. A light frame as of wood covered with paper or similar material designed to be flown in the air at the end of a long string.
No, 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 not that kite-walking dictionary. Let me explain it to you in song.
No, 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 no. Explain to the word kite. K stands for knowledge. I stands for information. Inquiry is a request of information, or in this case, each person figures out certain things out on their own.
Oh, yeah, for example, when I studied Liam Batista Alberti for our Renaissance project, and I did a rap about him. Oh, give me a V. A linguist, a poet, a priest, and an author went to get a drink, and were given an offer to become one person with all those skills, and to make new buildings with a pencil. They were thrilled. The things he would make would be super sturdy, but who was he? Liam Batista Alberti, born in Genoa, he's a pirate. Wasn't very fun, because his family's vile, sent to boarding school, studied law in Virginia, wrote the literature called Delacoura.
Yeah, T stands for work.
In our project, we support each other by reading difficult texts and dividing up the tasks based on our skills.
For example, our Renaissance project.
We go on, we work hard to go on field trips. The last one we went on was DNA technologies.
That sounds pretty cool.
We also have many options to explore with our project. With each project, we show an understanding of standards, like setting evidence for unconclusions, analyzing evidence of public speaking, like skits and musicals.
We also do a theme, passion project. Last year, I made a mat out of plastic bags, and I made a garment and a helmet.
First, we see what we like, then we research it, then we print it, and we'll off.
From crazy uncles to funny ex, to annoying brothers, kite is typically just a big fun family. Some might call us the close-knit learners.
We are all very separate, so what do you think?
Sounds pretty cool. I think I'll be looking into it in the future.
You might want to hurry, there's only about 50 kite students in each grade that can go, that can participate in it.
Innovating programming at Franklin can be defined in a few words, as presented by our students: knowledge, inquiry, teamwork, and exploration. Our students problem-solve, most of all, support each other, research their passions, learn through blended technologies, and manage their own goals. We know this is all just a fancy way to say, in kite, we're a family. We work together, and we have tried to create the best culture to represent what every middle schooler can do. Thank you.
You guys are very entertaining.
You should.
Hello, my name is Kevin Darrow, and I am a teacher in the Blended Academy. This is our fifth year blended. Over our five years, we began with one question, one principle that we tried to focus on, that was what was best for our students. So, we sat down with a group of teachers, and we started evaluating what works in a high school, current high school, and what doesn't work in a high school. And so, we looked at things like time, space, and overall relationships with students. And we started to renegotiate with our group of what we could and couldn't do. Luckily, we had a wonderful, fabulous administration that said, do what you need to do, we will obviously supervise you, but we will try to help you in whatever way we can. And what we came up with was several iterations of that over the five years, but it's always focused around the same principle of what's best for students. And what we've done is we've changed time in a high school. So, we've broken up our time multiple different ways. At this point, we're probably over 500, 600 different schedules that we've run on a daily basis that changes. But for the most part, it looks something like, if I need a little more time for LA, I get more time for LA. If Mr. Boone needs more time for math, he gets more time for math. If science has a large lab, they stay in science until they finish their science project. We break up the day in many different ways. We also use lots of work time for our students. So, one of the complaints that we get from our parents frequently is, I remember in high school, I had all this homework. Why is my kid not coming home with homework? Well, the problem is they're getting it done in school. So, we give them the same amount of homework as every student that goes through Jefferson. The thing is, we give them time to work on it. We give them time to work on it in a classroom with us, their actual teachers in a room. So, the old study hall of one teacher sitting with 75 kids, kind of baby-working, we have our actual we have our actual kids in a room, so I can look and say, I know what math learning target you're working on, you need to get to work, or I can say, I know you're missing an assignment from three weeks ago, because I spend three hours with these students every day, we teach the core subjects, math, science, and LA, so we teach exactly, I've been teaching for 15 years, I teach exactly what I've always taught, I just teach it in a different way. We always focus on academics first, so if students are struggling, or in some way are behind in their learning targets, we give them more time to work on that, so an example of that would be, I've had a student that would be struggling in LA, or was gone for a week, I simply put him in my classroom for two periods a day, rather than one period a day, so that student who maybe was struggling, disengaged, did not want to volunteer, now all of a sudden gets the confidence of seeing me teach a lesson, and then, you know, that second time around, they're the ones raising their hands wanting to share, because they now have a sense of confidence that they did not have before, and also, we really try to build relationships, as we said, I've had some students now for three hours a day for two years straight, as you can imagine, I know those students very well, and they know me very well, and as some of our wonderful elementary students talked about relationships with their teachers, we don't have that same, like, the first day of school, kids come in, they know my rules, they know exactly how to behave, they know exactly what our rules are in Blended, and they just get to work, and we take out all of those other little distractions, including, don't tell them, we took away their passing time, when they have to, when they have to leave and go do something, they just go and do it, it saves time for us, and it gives us more instruction time, I'll be happy to introduce a couple of our students who are super eager to speak to you right now.
Hello, good evening, I'm Nina, sorry, I'm Nikasa Blumvoo, and I'm a sophomore at Jefferson High School, and I've been in Blended since ninth grade, because I didn't have a choice, they just put me in there, but, anyway, this year, this year I've been involved in two projects, the first project was a community-based project called Doggy Dash, and it was created since the beginning of Blended, so 2015, and with that project, what we do is, we raise money for the animal rescue shelter across the street from us, Last Hope, and this year, we made like $200, I mean, we could've done more, but we learned and we move on, but over, over the last four years or so, we've made over a couple thousand, so, at least we got to be able to contribute to that, I made a website with that one, thank you Google, but like, it was okay, so, the project that I'm in right now is called Broadcasting, we're actually calling it the AV Club, because it's a little nostalgic for a high school video club, and with this club, where our goal is to do is make daily announcements for Blended, so everyone knows what's going on, because we have many projects going on with hydroponics, fish, 3D printing, and we also have the apparel store, and right now, what we're working on is interviews with our school and other schools, talking about how relationships between teachers and students can help build a better environment for the school, and today, we went to Harrison, and we talked to some students and a teacher, and we got to learn more about how their relationships with the teacher are helping them throughout their day, and vice versa, overall, our real goal for broadcasting right now is the daily announcements, but we're also making a video with our local officer, Officer Tramp, shout out, where he's gonna make a lockdown video regarding safety, and what to do in event of school shooters, since that, it has been a big issue lately, and overall, we just wanna make some good videos for Blended, and just increase student activity and participation with this program.
Hello, my name is Jackson Stone, and I'm a sophomore at Jefferson High School, this is my first year in the Blended Academy, and I'm in the apparel project, which is, we make t-shirts for different companies, and this started about three years ago, where we interviewed local businesses, and we wanted to see who can make our t-shirt the best, kind of, and then we decided that we would outsource them this year, and make our t-shirts ourself in-house, because it would save money, and it would involve the students more than having someone else do it, and we've kind of just taken jobs from different clubs around the school, like the throwing team, or football team, we make t-shirts for them, and everything we do is done by about six people, and we design the logos, print the logos, get the t-shirts, and put it on the t-shirts, and then sell them.
Awesome, my name's Andrew Boone, and I get to teach with Mr. Darrow, with Kevin, in the Blended Academy, and I just maybe wanna tie together the three words in closing here, academics, projects, and relationships, we take academics really seriously, they get the same core classes, math, science, and language arts that they would outside of Blended, but because we can pull out the stops of time, we can rearrange things, and do it faster, kind of compress, and pull out some of the fluff, and then we get to move on to projects, and projects and relationships are really tied together, because we do academics first, we don't have to tie their learning targets to a project, we can let them fly wherever they want to, and because we have really tight relationships with our students, we can help to fit them into a project that maybe would excite them, and get them engaged where they wouldn't be otherwise, we have tons of flexibility with those projects, I mean, we have a room set aside from my room with presses and printers where they're making t-shirts for a soccer team, and there's fish tanks, I don't even have fish tanks at home, I have 11 fish tanks in my classroom, because they breed and sell fish, that's not what I thought I was gonna be doing when I became a teacher, but that's what the kids wanted to do, and they're doing it, and it's awesome, and they're building 180 gallon fish tank, and they built a stand, and it was so sturdy, you could drive a truck on it, the tech teacher told us we could, so we felt safe standing on it, and it's awesome, and those, and those three things weave together in different ways every year, I don't know what will look like next year, we have to adapt with that question that Kevin opened up with, what's best for students, and next year, we're gonna get a new batch of students, and I don't know what'll be best for them, but we'll take those three words, academics, projects, and relationships, and we'll, we'll see what flies next year with that batch. If you have questions, I'm gonna let Nikasa and Jackson answer them, so. I didn't think there'd be questions that way, so.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Dan DeVore, principal of Metro High School, thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you, I'll be brief, so I can introduce some fabulous staff and students, we're gonna talk about the STEAM Academy, and what I really appreciate about Metro STEAM is, as we talk a lot about access, STEAM is one of those things that offers up access to community partners, trades, and, and what you'll maybe hear in some of these stories is a new view of what future could look like for some of our students, so first off is Chuck Tenelli.
Good evening, like, instead of my name to Chuck Tenelli, I teach science at Metro High School, and I'm one of the coordinators of our STEAM Academy, the Metro STEAM Academy is an integrated project-based program, available to all students at Metro High School, students design, create, construct, and explore while engaging in science, history, math, communication, art, and career and technical education content, students build 21st century skills while collaborating with team members, government, nonprofits, and other customers from our community on real-world problems and projects, we believe that our work at the Metro STEAM Academy supports the Cedar Rapids Community School District's vision of every learner future-ready, and I would like to share a few students' ideas with you.
Hi, I'm Diana, and I'm here to talk about our projects, so STEAM projects give us opportunities to have credits in many different subjects, we work, working on these projects, we do a lot of hands-on and use power tools, and working on the computer, we also use lasers and 3D printers and CNC machines.
I'm David, I'm a senior at Metro, so through our STEAM program, students are able to get in contact with various members of the community, often because of opportunities that are posed to the school, such as our current Berlin Wall project that we're doing with the National Czech and Slovak Museum, this is an important part of what our school offers to students, because it allows us to learn a wide variety of skills, such as interpersonal skills that will help in the workplace, whatever that may be, some of the partners we've worked with are Newman &amp; Munson, Terricon, Schmidt Construction, Built by Pros, and the National Czech and Slovak Museum.
Hi, I'm Sammy, why STEAM is important to me, I'm not bored, I like being active, I learn the best by doing, STEAM gives me many opportunities, I have never have been involved in many activities and projects, as I am with STEAM Academy, I have, also have the privilege to be working and learning alongside many of the STEAM Academy partners, most of the work I have done in STEAM has allowed me to see Cedar Rapids as a community, and a community of opportunities, I can see the future for myself, and look forward to all the challenges next year brings, thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Shannon Ellis from the STEAM Academy, and I just would like to just close by saying, personally and professionally, this kind of collaborative work is probably the best thing that has happened in my career, it's powerful, when we get together and we share ideas, and, you know, sometimes it's Matt and Chuck and I and Liz, and we're, we're talking as a team, and I forget, even in our own building, I need to be talking to everybody else, and I just had the opportunity to be talking to Mary and Sarah the other day, who teach our theater and coach our speech, and it, the Metro show that's coming up has an opportunity to talk about revolution, and there's this real collaborative piece there, where they can share stories with theater kids about this project that we're doing with the Berlin Wall, and, and I, you know, again, I just realized, across everything that we do at Metro, there's opportunity for all of us to be working collaboratively, and then too, for us, the real benefit professionally is everybody in this community that we work with, Cedar Rapids is not my hometown, but it's the biggest small town I've ever lived in, and I tell all my friends that this is the greatest place I've ever lived, so, thank you for this opportunity, and we'd love to entertain your questions about the Metro STEAM Academy.
Any questions? Well, I would like to thank you all for presenting, I've learned a lot this evening, and I commend you guys for the work, and students to get up in front of us to speak, and I like Sammy that, you're not bored, I like that.
So we'd like to invite you all, there's this Berlin Wall project, we start installation tomorrow, and so here, April through next November, is the, is the art installation part, where there'll be a number of murals that'll be presented by international artists that are coming to work with students in all of the Cedar Rapids schools, and then next November, November 9th, will be the anniversary of the wall coming down, and there will be a culminating event, that will be a party on the lawn with live bands, and there will be a piece of the wall that will actually tear down, so, we'd love to invite everybody to watch, be a part of that, Facebook, Metro STEAM Academy, we've got lots of information there, so. Yeah, we have video of you jumping on the wall, yep. Yep, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah, we start tomorrow with Schmidt Construction, with the installation of the wall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was just a highlight of some of the innovative programs happening, but how about those future-ready learners, pretty amazing, it really was, and the passion, the passion you heard from the administrators, the passion you heard from the instructors and staff, so I hope that this was helpful to you of some of the stuff that's happening in our Cedar Rapids schools, any final questions?
Keep up the good work.
And I just have a comment, you know, to talk about what our vision is for our district, and to see it all in action is really exciting and inspiring, so thank you to all of our staff, all of our administrators, and our fellow board members, to make sure that we're providing the tools and the support that you need, because this is really cool stuff, it's innovative, and as we've said before, we can't teach the way we taught for all of the years that we've been doing it, so, thank you so much.
Just, just like to follow up to it, you're bringing learning to life, and it's, it's real-world learning, and 21st century learning, I, I'm just thrilled to see that, and I, I hope that it continues to expand, so every student in our, in our district has an opportunity to experience that, because I think it's real-world assessment, it's gonna mean more than, than paper and pencil tests, it's going to provide our students for the opportunity to really succeed, and I think along with it, you're building the relationships, and we talk so much about mental health, I think that it's really one of the key to help giving the opportunity to have those communication skills and talk one-on-one, it's gonna go a long way, I think, to help solve some of those problems too, so, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, now we are going to move into a closed session for the evaluation of the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered, could I have someone please read the motion?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, April 8th, 2019, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual has requested a closed session as provided in Section 21.5, Subsection 1.1 of the Iowa Code.
Sarah, second.
Second.
This requires a roll call.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Janson.
Aye.
Director Borstein.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
And President Humble.
Aye. Next, I'll have Linda Nagle, please come up for a moment of silence.
Good evening, we have two individuals that we'd like to honor this evening in a moment of silence, I'd first like to introduce Stephen Probert from Hiawatha Elementary School, and then Annette Zemmerman from Erskine.
First, I wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to honor a member, a member of our family, our strong family, Misty Purcell passed away on Saturday, March 9th, 2019, at St. Luke's Hospital in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, she was born in Burlington, Iowa, and attended Davenport Central High School, she married Greg Purcell, with whom she had four children, Misty Purcell began her career with the Cedar Rapids Community School District on October 27th, 2015, she served children as a special education paraprofessional in Hiawatha Elementary's Behavior Focus Program, prior to that, she served students in a number of roles, Ms. Misty loved Hiawatha Elementary, and all the children in it, she was cheerful in all weathers, and never shirked a task, Ms. Misty loved her family, and her four children, Alasia, who is, who also works as a special education paraprofessional in our Behavior Focus Program, Damon, a Kennedy graduate, Gianna, a Kennedy student, and Kenyon, a TAF student, Ms. Misty had an inseparable bond with her siblings, and enjoyed traveling and taking trips with her sisters, family meant everything to her, and she went out of her way to show love and support to those she loved dearly, she was dedicated to her children, and was sure not to miss any of their special events, Ms. Misty embodied everything that is good, that is decent, she was loving, and gave selflessly, we miss her tremendously. Our hearts may have been broken, but by following her example of loving kindness and strength, our resolve to serve children has not been broken, we will always remember the lives of the students and staff that she has positively impacted as an employee of our school district, thank you.
Thank you, Board, for inviting me here tonight to recognize our crossing guard, Joni Musso, in a moment of silence, Joni was a crossing guard for the Cedar Rapids School District for 20 years, for those 20 years, she crossed students for Erskine Elementary at the corner of 34th and Dalewood, despite the weather conditions, Joni was there and missed just less than a handful of days in her 20 years, Joni was a very dedicated employee, she was very protective of the students who crossed at that corner, Joni would watch for them to come up the street, and often call the office to let us know if a student looked upset as they were crossing her corner, so someone could meet them at the door, she watched the neighborhood closely, and called the office, or city workers, if she thought that students were in danger, if there were stray dogs, if there was a pothole that needed fixed, she was very dedicated in the neighborhood's safety, this winter, as every winter, despite the polar vortex, Joni brought her own scoop, and scooped through the snow piles left by the, the snowplows, so that students didn't have to climb up and over to get to their path to go home, so as we observe Joni in this moment of silence, please remember the dedication that she provided to our students.